We begin with breaking news this hour. City councillor Jay Robinson has died. Her office confirming the Ward 15 councillor passed away last night. We're going to have reaction coming up in just moments. Ontario Public Health is confirming a child has died of measles. It's the first death in Ontario from the virus in more than a decade. And marking the International Day Against Homophobia, Transphobia and Biphobia at Toronto City Hall. This is a live shot. Mayor Olivia Chow expected to take part in a flag raising in just minutes. Good afternoon and welcome to CP24 Live at Noon. Thanks for being with us. I'm Lena Latifat. We begin with tragic news from City Hall this hour. City councillor Jay Robinson has died. Robinson represented Don Valley West since first being elected in 2010 and served as the Chair of both the TTC and the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee. In 2019, she announced she was taking a leave to undergo treatment for breast cancer. Robinson returned to work a year later, but mostly attended meetings virtually. She leaves behind three children. And joining us live from City Hall with the latest on this loss is CP24's Melissa Doug. And Melissa, what are people at City Hall saying? I know a number of city councillors are already expressing their condolences.
It is a sad day here at City Hall. Yes, we are hearing from councillors and they are posting messages online, paying tribute to their colleague and saying just how much she meant to them. Jay Robinson, her office confirming online that we are deeply saddened to announce that councillor Jay Robinson has passed away last night in the presence of her family. And you know, looking at her social media, just yesterday, she had posted that she was wishing Dr Eileen Devilla and Chief Peg the best for them as they just recently announced that they're going to be leaving their City of Toronto duties. Now Mayor Olivia Chow, as you just mentioned, she's going to be taking part in a flag raising ceremony. That's going to happen shortly. We are expecting her to react to this. So we're going to check in with her a little later on. And I'm going to be spending time here at City Hall collecting reaction from councillors and hearing what they have to say about their colleague that they lost far too soon. Back to you.
Melissa, thanks so much for this. And I just want to share some tweets that are coming in from a number of city councillors. We're hearing from Ward 12 councillor Josh Matlow reacting to the news, writing, "On behalf of our community, I wish my most heartfelt condolences to the family and friends of councillor Jay Robinson and to the residents of Don Valley West. We will always be grateful for her service and passion for our city. I will miss her." We're also hearing from Don Valley North councillor Shelley Carroll, writing, "Such sad news. My condolences to her family and to her hardworking and loyal team." We also have reaction for you from Ward 24 councillor Paul Ainsley. He also offered his condolences to Robinson's family and friends, describing her as a really strong advocate for the community. And he says he will really miss working with her. As Melissa pointed out, Olivia Chow, she is at City Hall this hour for a flag raising and she is expected to address this tragic passing. Councillor Jay Robinson, longtime Toronto City councillor, passes away after being diagnosed with cancer. Keep it here on CP24 as we keep a close eye on this breaking news out of City Hall. Also making news, the province is reporting its first measles death in more than a decade. Public Health Ontario says a child younger than five years old died after contracting the virus. The agency says the child was one of five who hadn't been vaccinated and required hospitalisation. No measles deaths were reported in Ontario between 2013 and 2023. Twenty-two measles cases have been confirmed in Ontario since the start of the year. The last time cases were that high was back in 2014.
I think it's just important for people to recognise that there's a lot of measles virus circulating globally. And we're seeing more and more cases around the world. Of course, Canadians travel abroad and we know people travel to Canada. We can't control what happens outside of our borders, but we do, we can ensure that people have access to vaccinations, including our routine childhood immunisations like the measles vaccine. And it's just important that people recognise that there obviously was some disruption of public health services during the darkest days of the pandemic. Some people might have missed the vaccine dose here or there. And it's really important that people are up to date on their vaccines.
Measles symptoms include a red rash, red eyes, fever, cough and runny nose. Well, Premier Doug Ford is asking the federal government to stop approving new sites that provide safe opioids. Ford wrote to the Prime Minister to request Ottawa review the safe supply sites that have been authorised by Health Canada. He also wants the government to require provincial support to open the facilities. The request comes a day after the province told Toronto Public Health to drop its application to decriminalise drug possession for personal use. Ontario's chief medical officer of health has actually called for the expansion of safe supply to deal with the opioid crisis. Time now is 12:05. We're sitting at 18 degrees in the city. A lot of people trying to get out of town for the Maylong weekend. Adjoa Nsia Yabwa keeping a close eye on the roads. How's it looking, Ed?
We have some major problems, Lena, that are impacting the driver commuters that are heading out towards Milton. So what you're looking at is Trafalgar. It's been closed both north and southbound. This is all the result of a garbage truck which lost its load. It was carrying household garbage, ended up dropping it all over the highway. So all over the Trafalgar roadway, actually. So if you're trying to get off at Trafalgar via the 401, you can't. It's the ramps that take you to Trafalgar have been blocked. Same situation if you're coming on the eastbound side, they're also blocked off. Once any lanes reopen, we'll let you know. But it looks like this clean-up's going to be there for the next little bit. Also, it looks like we are dealing with a situation. This is on the westbound 401 in the Collectors, just approaching the DVP 404. It's the two right lanes that are occupied with a stalled dump truck. So that's also impacting and slowing down the commute. And if you're trying to get that early jump and head out towards the cottage, things are definitely getting busier as you make your way on the eastbound 401 into Durham. I'll send it back to you, Lena.
Adjoa, thanks so much. Well, it is the unofficial start to summer, the Victoria Day long weekend. And lots of people, as we've been telling you, are trying to escape to cottage country. CP24's Beatrice Faisman joins us live with more on how that drive is going. Beatrice.
Lena, it's going not bad so far all morning long. It's been a pretty smooth sailing along the 400 northbound. It still is. We're not seeing this build up of volume here in the northbound lanes just yet. But of course, we know as the afternoon goes on, that is going to change. And it's going to take you longer and longer to get to your destination. Lots of people hauling all kinds of things from ATVs to bicycles to sea dews, boats, pontoons, RVs, you name it. I have seen it here at the Enroute at King City here. Lena, and people are just in such a good mood as well. Everyone, of course, just celebrating the fact that it's starting to feel like summer, smell like summer out here. And we're going to have a beautiful weekend. That's what Bill Coulter's been telling us all morning long. Lots of people that I was talking to very first thing this morning that were here in the seven o'clock hour were the fishermen. They had their little fishing boats out. They were eager to get up there, get a good spot, get the boats in the water and get their rods going too. One gentleman I even talked to is competing in a bass competition up north today. But for cottagers, some people tell me, look, if you're the owner of a cottage, you know that this weekend is not about rest and relaxation. It's about prepping your cottage and getting ready. It's a lot of work, but lots of others just excited to barbecue, to have a couple of drinks and to celebrate the fact that the warmer weather is here, cottage season is here. And it's a time for togetherness and family and friends as well. Here's what some of these cottage goers and campers have been telling me today. Okay, guess we're going to have that clip for you a little bit later on. Next time we chat, Lena, we'll have some reaction from some of the people that we've been talking to. But yeah, moods are good. The weather right now, a little grey, but it's going to improve first thing tomorrow morning. Plenty of sunshine to come around. And also keep in mind, the police are going to be out patrolling the major highways and arteries like the 400 series, for example. The OPP always look for four particular things: impaired driving, aggressive driving, distracted driving and seat belts. And keep in mind, this is also the first long weekend where if you're stopped by the OPP, you'll have to submit to a mandatory roadside alcohol test as well, Lena. So some changes that are important to keep everybody safe. And as always, no alcohol, whether it's when you're driving, before you're driving or on the water. That's the number one message that continuously police services across the province will tell you. But otherwise, have a great time. Keep those drinks on the dock, as Kerry Schmitz from the OPP likes to say.
That's a good message. Beatrice Faisman reporting live. Thank you, Bee. And you're watching CP24 Live at Noon. We're going to take a quick break now. But when we come back, we'll have much more on our breaking news out of City Hall. Some tragic news to share with you. Longtime city councillor Jay Robinson has died. Stay with us. We'll be right back. We have breaking news. City councillor Jay Robinson has died. Robinson represented Don Valley West since first being elected in 2010 and served as the Chair of both the TTC and the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee. In 2019, she announced she was taking a leave to undergo treatment for breast cancer. Robinson returned to work a year later, but mostly attended meetings virtually. She leaves behind three children. Let's get to some reaction from City Hall. Councillor Paul Ainsley has just tweeted, "My prayers and condolences to Jay's family and friends. She was always a strong advocate for her community. I will miss working with her." And joining us live now with more on this is former Toronto mayor John Tory. Mr Tory, thanks so much for joining us. This is just heartbreaking news coming out of City Hall. I know you're in transit right now. You must have just learned about this. Can I ask you what's running through your mind?
Well, I'm very sorry she lost the fight that she fought with such grace and determination. And she's been struggling with cancer for a long time. And this was very hard on her and it was hard on her family. And she fought it all the way. But you know, she was a great public servant. I mean, she had a keen interest in the environment. She had a keen interest in keeping taxes low, which I shared with her. She was the Chair of the TTC. She was at one time a public servant who worked on economic development. So she really, you know, did all of that and was a very feisty representative for her constituents in North Toronto. You know, they knew that Jay Robinson was in their corner. And you know, she took people on at City Council sometimes in a way that, you know, caused them certainly to be on their guard. But she was a very, very determined representative. She will be very much missed because even though people went some rounds with Jay Robinson and probably lost as often as they won, you could not like her. I mean, she was a likable person and she fought hard and she loved her family too. You know, the struggle with cancer, she would tell me the stories of how she was so whipped by the chemotherapy and this just, you know, made it so hard for her to have a proper family life, leave alone to continue to do her job. And so I'm very saddened by this news and I do extend my condolences on behalf, I know of everybody, to Jay's family and to thank her. It's never too late to say thank you for a life very well-lived and for public service very well rendered to the people of the City of Toronto, which she did again with great dedication.
Just heartbreaking. As you noted, she was a veteran city councillor, a fierce advocate for her community. What would she tell you about her vision for the city?
Well, I mean, she looked, to be truthful, I think a lot of people would say that while she was very committed to the environment and to the preservation of the environment and to the sort of greenness of Toronto. And while she was somebody who kept a very close eye on development because she represented a lot of single-family neighbourhoods and she struggled with the changes that are happening now where we have to accept more forms of housing all across the city. But I think, you know, what she wanted to do more so than anything else beyond providing good representation was to look after the taxpayers' dollar. I mean, she was one of those people. And I shared this view that you really have to keep the finances in reasonable shape, but also keep an eye on how much you're taxing people. Because, you know, a lot of them are older people that, you know, can't afford to be writing much bigger cheques to the city, leave alone all the other taxes they pay. And so this...
Okay, I think we've lost our connection with former Toronto mayor John Tory, who is in transit right now. Again, we are following breaking news here on CP24. Longtime city councillor, veteran city councillor Jay Robinson has died. And we're going to try and take you live to City Hall now. That is where Mayor Olivia Chow is marking the International Day Against Homophobia, Transphobia and Biphobia. Let's see if she's speaking about this loss.
The 2S LGBTQ plus council advisory body and the Equity Lands Tool enabling city employees to conduct an equity impact analysis on policies, programming and services to make sure there is no unintended barriers. We're happy to support community agencies such as 519 and organisations and events such as Pride Toronto and its annual festival. Progress takes work. It takes hard work and organising. We will stand with you and say that no one will be left behind. We will fight with you on equality, freedom and justice. And we will never take it for granted. We will celebrate the advances and we will work together to make a city where there is no hate, where together we can make a city where everyone belongs. So allowed me to have folks to come together and raise the flag. And then we'll have some speeches, right? All right, let's do some flag raising. And then after that, I'll give this to you because it's hard to hold on to this while we're pulling the flag up, okay? So join us, join us, all the councillors. Come on over. We need some of you to help pull. Where's the... There's those... Okay, okay, all right, all right. Yeah. Who would like to come and join in the pulling of the flag? He can hold on to... Oh, thank you. Make sure we can see you. Don't stay behind the flag. Yeah, we're good? Okay, are we ready? Hang on, hang on. All right.
All right, we've just been listening and watching the events unfold at City Hall where Mayor Olivia Chow is marking the International Day Against Homophobia, Transphobia and Biphobia. What you're watching now is the flag raising, the raising of the Progress Pride Flag at City Hall. We're also following breaking news from City Hall where we are now learning longtime city councillor Jay Robinson has died after a long battle with cancer. Olivia Chow is expected to take questions after this flag raising. So we will take you back live to City Hall as soon as that gets underway. In other news, Toronto and Minnesota will play a deciding game five tonight in the PWHL semifinals this evening. The home team has won every game so far with Minnesota getting the 1-0 victory in overtime on Wednesday to tie the series. The team announced this week that star forward Natalie Spooner is out for the rest of the playoffs with a knee injury. Tonight's final is here in Toronto at the Coca-Cola Coliseum at seven o'clock. The winner faces Boston in the final. And TSN Radio's Matt Cause says Toronto must improve its goal scoring in order to win this game.
In fact, Toronto led the PWHL with goals in the regular season. They've now been shut out in the last two games. They had only two goals in game two. And I know a lot of this is Natalie Spooner, the best goal scorer in the PWHL. She is out with a knee injury. But Sarah Nurse was one of the top scorers. They've got other players, Hannah Miller, Blair Turnbull. They need to be able to get this done tonight, which I know sounds like a cliche. On the other side, the goalie for Minnesota, she was great in the regular season. And she's got a 985 save percentage in the playoffs. Some of that is her, some of that is Toronto. They've got to put more pucks on the net.
The New York Rangers are off to the Eastern Conference Final. They were down 3-1 in the third period against the Hurricanes. But New York's Chris Crater rattled off three unanswered goals to lead them to a 5-3 win to end the series in six games. The Rangers will now take on the Florida Panthers or Boston Bruins for a spot in the Stanley Cup Final. And this is a story a lot of people in the sports world are talking about today. Some drama this morning in Kentucky ahead of the second round of the PGA Championship. World number one golfer Scottie Scheffler was arrested after attempting to drive around an earlier collision outside the Valhalla Golf Club. A police officer instructed Scheffler to stop, but he continued to drive toward the course entrance. That is when he was taken into custody. TSN's Adam Scully joins us live with more on this bizarre story. And bizarre, that's probably the best way to describe what happened today, Adam.
Yeah, certainly the best way to describe it. I don't think anyone had waking up to see Scottie Scheffler in handcuffs and then seeing his mugshot on their bingo card for the day. And just a wild overreaction, a wild misunderstanding. For anyone who's ever been to a professional golf tournament, it can be a bit of a gong show to get in, whether you're the number one ranked player in the world, you're a volunteer or you're just trying to go in and spectate as a fan. And apparently at Valhalla, there's only one way to get in. There's two narrow lanes, so a bit of a kerfuffle, to say the least. Unfortunately, there was a fatality about an hour before the incident or watching right now went down. So Scheffler had nothing to do with that. But, you know, charged with four different charges, a wild overreaction here. Scheffler has an arrangement arranged for Tuesday at 9:00 AM Eastern. But he is out on the golf course now. He was detained by police about 7:28 AM and back on the golf course at 9:12 AM. Just a wild event.
Wild event too. What's even more wild, Adam, is that after everything happened, he then very calmly, you know, teed off and birdied his first hole.
You know, isn't that crazy? There was speculation when he was driving to the golf course after being in handcuffs in jail that perhaps he was going to pick up his stuff and go home. Because as from a human perspective, he just had a baby nine, 10 days ago. It would be totally understandable for Scottie Scheffler to say, you know what? I spent an hour in jail. Maybe this just isn't for me. But that's the competitor in him. He's the number one ranked player in the world. He's won four of his last five starts, including the Masters a couple of weeks ago. So Scheffler, he's back out on the course right now. He's had a lot of fan support, which is very understandable. They're on his side. He's currently one under through his first seven holes in the second round.
So Scottie Scheffler put out a statement this morning addressing what happened, calling it a misunderstanding, also expressing condolences and sympathies for the family of the victim. Are you expecting any more reaction, Adam? Are we going to hear from the PGA Tour?
I'm sure we'll hear from the PGA of America who's running this event, the PGA Championship. What I'm really intrigued is to hear Scottie Scheffler on the microphone or at the microphone. I'm guessing that will happen after his second round here, just to hear his side of the story. Because for those who know Scottie Scheffler, he's very soft spoken. He wouldn't hurt a fly if it came through him. He's just a very nice, gentle soul. And even the events that we're watching right now from the arrest, oh, some six hours ago, there was a journalist on site, Jeff Garland, who did some unbelievable work, by the way. And Scheffler calmly asked him with his, in handcuffs, asking if Jeff could help him. Because clearly the police officers didn't recognise him. They didn't see the courtesy logo from the PGA Championship that each player gets. But, you know, he spent a little bit of time in jail. Will always have that mugshot, which is still wild to believe that Scottie Scheffler and mugshot in the same sentence is a real thing. But really curious to hear what Scottie Scheffler has to say once his second round is finished.
All right, Adam Scully, thanks so much. Pleasure to have you on.
Thank you.
Olivia Chow, speaking to reporters now after we have just learned longtime city councillor Jay Robinson has died. Let's listen in live.
At council, she's have served four terms since 2010. And she has represented the Don Valley, the people of Don Valley North tremendously well. As council members and as a mayor, we miss her work. We miss her passion in serving her communities and her dedication to supporting the arts and culture of this city. She's done phenomenal work and she is just really loved by the residents she represent. We want to collectively send condolence to her husband and her three sons. And Toronto flags will be flying half-mask. There will be a condolence book starting on Saturday at North York City Council. And there will be a condolence book here at City Hall starting Tuesday. On Wednesday at City Council, we'll have a presentation. I don't know whether other councillors that have known Jay Robinson for quite a while want to say a few words. Feel free to do so. Any of you that have worked with her.
I think we can all say that Jay had all the qualities that we like in people. She was honest. She was direct. She was very hardworking and she cared very, very deeply about the community of Don Valley. And I had the real privilege to serve with her when I was first elected on the TTC board and she was the Chair. And she was a great Chair. She's a great role model. She will leave a mark on women in politics for a very, very long time. And I was very privileged to work alongside her and to learn from her. And I echo the mayor. I think all of our thoughts are with her family, both her family at home, but also her family here at City Hall, because our staff do become our family. So we're thinking of them today too.
Is anybody else trying to say?
I know a couple of you worked with her the longest. I'm not sure if there's anybody else that would sort of...
I'll just say that Jay was very much loved in her community and she was a fierce champion for her community. And outstanding for me is her commitment and dedication to Toronto's green spaces, Toronto's ravines. She had very big ravines, it's Don River. And she wanted our ravines to be beautiful and for the city to tend our green spaces. So I personally will take up that flag now that she's left in making sure that we respect and love our green spaces and ravines in the City of Toronto.
I'm not sure if anybody has anything to say about the fact that, you know, her illness was very well documented and she was at every single council meeting. You know, just if anybody would care to talk about the fact that she really worked right up until the end for the city.
Sure. Jay never gave up on representing her community, representing the issues she cared about. Up until the very last days and weeks of her life, she was fighting for a city that is more beautiful, more inclusive, greener and fairer. And we'll all miss her.
Deputy Mayor, you have done a lot of work on Vision Zero. Councillor Robinson helped launch that program. Can you just tell us a little bit about, you know, the impact that her work on that file had?
Yeah, Jay Robinson was the launch of Vision Zero. And when I was elected, it was great to watch how hard she was working on advancing, in particular, the implementation of the school zones. As a mother, she was very, very committed to having safer school zones in the City of Toronto. And really, it's under her leadership that we have seen a big reduction in fatalities in the City of Toronto, 17%. And that's because of her hard work and we're so very, very grateful for it.
Councillor, you mentioned her as a mother. I know a lot of you guys, you have kids and a lot of people see you sort of as one-dimensional, you know, Robinson and three kids. I remember I was here when she brought her sign to take kids to work day. Can you just talk about that element, about just her being a parent as well as kind of being a councillor and the other half that we don't see there?
Well, I think Jay, as a mother, really defined who she was as a person. It was underlying her commitment to school safety zones and to really making sure that we have a better future for all of the children of Toronto. And she really breathed that every single day, both at home but here at work.
Mayor, I guess City Council Day will be the day that you sort of discuss everything that this city clerk over by elections and things like that?
Yeah, we haven't begun to even consider it.
If we could just switch to another topic, is the premier sending a letter to the federal government on safe supply? I'm just wondering what your response to that is and including the, I guess, the merit of...
Okay, following some really tragic news, longtime city councillor Jay Robinson has died. And we're now hearing from a number of city councillors just outside City Hall to talk about this loss. Mayor Olivia Chow saying Toronto's flags will be flying at half-mast. A book of condolence will be available for residents at City Hall. And councillor Robinson will also be honoured in a presentation at City Hall on Tuesday. Lots of reaction coming in. And joining us now for more reaction is former Toronto City councillor Joe Mihavich. Thanks so much for joining us. This is obviously a big, big loss for you and your colleagues. So I want to start by saying I'm so sorry. Can you tell us more about your relationship with Jay Robinson?
Yes, thank you very much for the condolences. I think many of us who are working or worked in the short recent past to the long recent, long past are mourning today, losing our friend Jay Robinson after a five-year cancer journey that she fought nobly, as has been said by others. The fact that she continued to work right through that journey up until the end. She was on, at council meetings, yes, virtually, right up until a couple of weeks ago. And that is a mark of her fortitude. The piece that I want to highlight though is her pre-councillor role. She was a 20-year staff person at City Hall in the Special Events Department. And, you know, that might not mean much to some, but if you've ever been to Nouy Blanche, if you've ever been to Winterlicious, if you've been to Summerlicious, if you attended the World Youth Day in 2002, that was Jay Robinson acting as city staff. She had a very unique ability to organise events that had a strong economic focus as well as a strong arts and culture focus. And she brought that discipline, that call it financial business discipline, to some very special events that we had here at the City of Toronto. very special events that we had here at the city of Toronto. So yes, Summerlicious, Winterlicious, Nouvelle Blanche, that's all Jay Robinson.
I'm so glad that you highlighted that, because I think it really tells the story of who she was before she entered public life and how much she cared about the city. What stands out to you about her vision for Toronto?
Well, her vision was a, was an inclusive vision. She represented Don Valley West. She was very green oriented. She was very fiscally responsible. She was really, I guess she was a voice as well of keeping Toronto maybe not as intense and not as high-rise. She, I don't think, I think she did not support the heights and densities that some people in Toronto support. So that was maybe a bit, a bit of a difference that she had with others. She, she did try to work with everyone. She worked across the aisle with people who were a little bit more center or a little bit more on the left side of council. Very fiscally responsible, but I think the core, to understand councillor Robinson's core, it really is that space where it's arts, cultures, special events, making Toronto, putting Toronto on the map as a place where things happen. That was her gift, I think, to this, to this city.
Mr. Mahavik, do you remember your last conversation with her? What did she tell you, if you remember?
Oh, we were dealing with a very local matter in, in her ward. And I think that, that, that particular issue highlights to me how not only was she able to work on the macro level at the TTC, taking care of public transit at the city, for the city broadly speaking, but also at the micro level, where it was a very specific issue that where I was helping a resident in her ward. And she, she was there on the other side. So she paid attention to the minutiae of being a city councillor, as well as the big-picture city councillor. And that's when we had our last conversation. And that was in the middle of her cancer journey. And she didn't want to talk too much about the cancer journey. She really wanted to talk about getting things done. And that was Jay.
And so incredible that she worked till the very end to make Toronto, as we heard, a safer, greener place for all. Former Toronto City councillor Joe Mahavik, thank you so much for sharing your thoughts. And once again, I'm so sorry for your personal loss.
Thank you very much, Lena.
Time now is 12:41, 18 degrees. We're going to shift gears here and talk about the traffic situation for a closer look at that, here's Adwa.
Well, Lena, it's getting a whole lot busier out there on the major routes, and we're dealing with a brand-new collision, this one impacting the drive on the northbound lanes of the Don Valley Parkway. This is right at Bayview Blower. It looks like it's about to clear, so some good news. It was in the left lane, and there was a slowdown from Dundas, but things should start to improve now that the problem is gone. Problems which aren't clearing. It's a stalled transport truck. This is the westbound lanes of the 401 at Bayview. It's the two left lanes that are blocked with cleanup of this problem. Then further west on the 401, it's the right lane and shoulder blocked. It was for this transport truck which bed was on fire. So fire is out, that's the good news, but that right-landed shoulder is still occupied. If you're traveling out towards the 401 west, trying to exit the ramp that takes you to Trafalgar, you can't do that. This is the reason. It's because of a truck, which was carrying garbage, ended up rolling on its side. That's the truck that is on its side. The cleanup is underway, expected to last for the next four to six hours. If you're looking for an alternative around this, there are plenty. You can probably use Mississauga Road or Winston Churchill, or even use the 407 to bypass. Trafalgar is closed in either direction between the 401 and Steels. Outside of camera view, crews on scene of a collision. It's on the 400 northbound, north of Major Mack, has the right lane blocked. Lena, I'll send it back to you.
The CP24 traffic report is brought to you by CapitalDirect.ca.
Thank you, Adwa. Well, it is the unofficial start to summer, the Victoria Day long weekend, and lots of people are trying to get out of town. CB24's Beatrice Faisman joins us live with more on the mass exodus, and the weather is going to be just right, Beatrice.
It is, no cold weather telling us all morning long that the weekend is going to be looking amazingly. Plenty of sunshine right now, you can't tell it's a bit gray out, but it's going to turn around. I've got faith in it. And what better thing to do than head out of town and go up to the cottage, whether you're going to be chilling on the dock this weekend, or if you're lucky enough to have a boat, or a sea doo, or a canoe, or a kayak, enjoy some time out in the water for the first time this season. Because it really is the start, the unofficial start to summer. And people that we've been talking to, they're, they're in a great mood. They, first of all, traffic is putting them in a good mood. There's not tons of it. You can drive along the highway at highway speed, not bumper to bumper. I can assure you, in the next few hours, it's going to be different. People are leaving work a little bit later, we're not able to... It's, it's going to start to build up, but it's going to take longer and longer. Out first thing this morning, lots of people with their boats especially, hauling the boats. I've met a lot of fishermen who've been eager to get up there and start getting their rods in the water as well, the first fish of the season. And for families, it's all about that bonding time, enjoying some time together, having a nice campfire, lighting, having some nice smores, maybe a couple of little adult beverages, little beverageinos, as I like to call them, and just making the most of it. So here's some reaction from some of the people I've been chatting with here at the en route.
We always go up to the cottage. We've had the cottage for quite a few years. It's my husband's cottage, and he's working, so he'll meet us up there.
Ooh! Maddie likes the microphone!
You don't get enough time together, so it's great to just go up and spend some time and relax with everybody.
We're going up to Algonquin for like a four-day backcountry camping thing, so I think we're going to be about eight people. Hopefully, weather's going to be cooperative, but it should be a good time.
So whether you're backcountry camping and trying to stave off the mosquitoes and black flies up in Algonquin, or enjoying some time at the cottage, it's all about making memories with loved ones this long weekend, Lena. And again, traffic moving smooth if you're heading up north right now. We're going to be... Back to you.
Beatrice, thanks so much for this. Coming up next on CB24, live at noon, Ontario has recorded its first measles death in more than a decade. We're going to speak to Dr. Fahad Razak next. Welcome back. More on one of our top stories now. The province reporting its first measles-related death in more than a decade. For more on the outbreak, we're joined live now by Dr. Fahad Razak, internist at St. Michael's Hospital. You'll also remember him as the former head of the Ontario Science Table. Dr. Razak, it's good to see you. Thank you for joining us. How concerned are you about this?
It's a really sad case, I have to say. And first, I just want to express condolences to this child's family. It reflects what we were worried about, which is that the resurgence of measles globally and the cases that are starting to spring up in Canada will affect children, especially children, but anyone really who is unprotected. And what this report has shown us is that it can result in death. We know this historically. As you said, we have not seen this in a decade, which is wonderful. But again, the fact that we are now seeing this first death, we're seeing some children in hospitals, it is concerning because this is a disease that can be essentially eliminated through vaccination, and especially severe disease can be essentially eliminated. So I would treat this as an extremely sad situation and an opportunity for, for people out there to think about getting vaccination and protection if they haven't done so.
Yeah, no, that's a really important message, as you've highlighted, totally preventable. What about babies, though, Dr. Razak, who can't be vaccinated against this highly infectious disease?
So there's two things to consider for, for the very youngest. And so we typically start this vaccination at age 12 months, and then a second vaccine at around 18 months. If you are in a situation where your baby's going to be exposed, let's say through travel, which is where most of these cases are coming from right now, and we're entering travel season, you can extend that vaccination to as early as six months. So that is something to consider. It starts the protection process. It's not perfect, but it is better than not protecting those babies. And then generally, having everyone around them immunized and protected. And this gets back to that idea of the fact that measles really hasn't been an illness that we have to worry about here in Canada is because we had this overall layer of protection, which is now eroded. And it's eroded for a lot of reasons. There was missed vaccinations during the pandemic. There's an element of misinformation around this. But, you know, what I really want to emphasize is this vaccine is something that we've had for many decades, incredibly protective. The very sad example here of the child who died was someone who was unvaccinated. All five children of the 22 cases that have ended up in hospital have been unvaccinated. And we have confirmed now that 12 of the 13 children who were infected were unvaccinated, and the 13th child, we don't know the vaccination status. And it really highlights how protective this vaccine is.
For sure. As you noted, measles can sometimes result in death, but we're seeing now with this child so tragic is the worst-case scenario. As a parent, how do you know when things are taking a turn for the worse? What do you watch for beyond the expected symptoms?
Yeah, so really, if you have a child who has symptoms that are consistent with a measles infection, which includes the rash that everyone talks about, the red rash, but also respiratory symptoms, generally, a child is unwell in any way, and you're worried, you're not sure. The most important thing, of course, is to seek medical attention. If you can do that through an emergency room, especially if you think it's a, if it's a measles-related illness, you go to, you go to an environment where they have the ability to isolate that child and not expose others, not bringing that child, for example, into a family medicine office where they can expose a lot of other children, and there's, they don't have that capacity necessarily to protect, to protect others. The important thing now, though, I think, is as we enter travel season, go to your public health units, your primary care physician, your nurse practitioner, if you have access to one, and make sure that your vaccinations are up to date. And if you haven't had your vaccine or you're unsure, this is one of those vaccines where you can get an extra dose to ensure protection. We know it's very safe. We know many people especially don't have those old vaccine records, the, the yellow cards that we used to have. So they may not know. And if you're in that situation and you're unaware, then get the extra vaccine dose now, especially as you enter the summer season. People are going to travel. This is great. People should travel. It's been a tough four years, but there is an opportunity to enhance protection.
Dr. Fahad Razak, we so appreciate your time. Thanks so much for joining us, and have a great long weekend.
Nice to see you, as always.
Coming up next on CB24, live at noon, the Halton Down Syndrome Association is getting ready for a big walk. We're going to chat with some of the people that's making that happen. Stay with us. Well, the Halton Down Syndrome Association works to empower those with Down Syndrome to reach their full potential in all stages of life. And this is really exciting, the annual Walk for Down Syndrome is happening next month. So joining us live to talk more about this big event are Ryan Wurks, Jacob Streton, and Christina Foster. Welcome to all of you. It's so great to sit down with you. First of all, you guys ready for the big event? I mean, you're only weeks away now.
I am, I am. I'm so excited about the holiday coming up, so.
Yeah, and what about you? Are you excited and ready to go, Jacob?
Uh, yes.
Yes?
Yeah.
Christina, how much time and energy goes into something like this? And what is the Big Walk all about? What's the message and the mission?
Yeah, absolutely. First of all, thank you for having us here. We're super excited. Tons of hours go in. We have an incredible group of volunteers. We're very, we're all volunteer-based. So lots of work from getting our sponsors, vendors, locking in some local celebrities, the mayors, things like that, and just logistically, tons of work goes into it. And really, what the Walk entails is we raise money and awareness, and this enables us to run our year-long programs that work to support individuals like Ryan and Jacob and all the other 150 families that are a part of our, of our organization. So it's really incredible and what we do and all the support that the Walk brings for us.
And so many volunteers coming together to do this. I love that. What do you love about the Halton Down Syndrome Association, Ryan?
Well, I do love to spend time with my friends, like my best friend, we're here in Bismarck.
Are you best friends?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and with my other friends as well, so.
And what about you, Jacob? What do you love about the association and, and the fact that you get to do this every single year?
Um, the world Halton Down Syndrome is to say hi to our friends.
Yeah, and being in a community, right?
Uh, yeah.
Well, I want to talk more about that, the community. What is it like to see all your friends and other parts of the community, families, come out?
Yeah, it makes me very happy, support with my, my family and friends, so.
And I'm sure it's so much fun. Christina, what is the big day like? And give our viewers a sense of what's happening, what that day looks like, and the big day as well.
Absolutely. So it's happening on Saturday, June 8th. So like you mentioned, just a few short weeks away, at the Milton Fairgrounds from 9:00 to 2:00. And the day just turns into a big carnival. We have bouncy castles, right, guys? We have food vendors that come. We go for our community walk. There's music, dancing, just so much fun, and just a really, a day just to celebrate life and everything that we do and, and focus on our VIPs.
Love that so much. This sounds like such a great event. Ryan and Jacob, really quickly, your favorite thing about the event?
My, my absolute favorite thing is about guys, the food.
The food? I like that. Good answer. What about you, Jacob? What's your favorite thing?